This is the Monroe Planning Commission regular meeting for Monday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is now seven P M. I'm gonna ask Hannah to call the role.
Right? Commissioners present and establishing a quorum. Commissioners Blair, Bull, Dawkins, Lockhart, Low, Petrino, Commissioner Nugent is excused.
Thanks, Hannah. This is the time for people to speak to the planning commission in person on issues related to the city Monroe, set those issues subject to a public hearing. We have no one here, so we'll move on. I did not submit it. We're gonna move on to section five, old business. We have, I have five point one draft Monroe twenty forty-four comprehensive plan findings of fact and recommendation from Kate.
Thank you. So I brought one slide tonight. Just as a reminder, the Growth Management Act has several goals and not all of them are in line. Some of them are competing. And so just a reminder, as you'll see in your findings of fact, that that was part of the introduction in addition to the mandatory elements. And so I just wanted to leave that up of all the things that you've been considering since September of two thousand and twenty-two when we started this project. So just walking through your agenda bills or a reminder of where you've been and what has brought us to this evening's discussion. You again began these conversations in September of two thousand and twenty-two. The last thing you did was your public hearing on September thirtieth. And I just realized I didn't do a slide with the requested actions, so we'll have to work on that. So after considering all of the information that you have been reviewing over the last several months, we have prepared findings and or findings, yeah, findings and conclusions and a recommendation for your consideration this evening. Again, the agenda bill includes all the information that was provided at your public hearing. It's just background information. The most important piece, though, this evening is attachment number one. And this is the draft findings for your consideration. So just I'm gonna walk you through this. One of our mandatory requirements is to send the draft plan to the Department of Commerce and they send it all to state agencies for a sixty day review period. In addition to that, the city also sent it to our other agencies, and that includes the tribes, the city of Snohomish, Duval, Sultan, so neighboring jurisdictions, our utility providers, the school districts, and so this information is laid out for you. Next is a quick summary of our environmental process. We issued a determination of significance and then worked through a supplemental environmental impact statement. That was included in your materials for the public hearing and is again included in your packet this evening just for your information. The final S E I S will be issued on Friday, but we wanted to make sure that you had all the public comments, so you could also take that into consideration. The next section just lists out all of the chapters and appendices that are part of the draft Monroe twenty forty-four comprehensive plan. And again, this is looking at a twenty year planning horizon. The next piece summarizes the public participation and that covers not only the resolution that was adopted by the city council, but it includes the matrix and overview that may help prepare for us on how we were gonna reach out to the public to gain comments. And it includes a summary of last spring's outreach and then the outreach that occurred this summer, including open houses, surveys, the pop-up events, our activities up at the school district, and then at the senior center earlier in June. The next phase just gives you the revised code of Washington citation of what we are our timeline for this update, which is December thirty first of this year. And then every ten years thereafter. As I stated, the last couple of meetings, we actually have a new five year touch point with commerce where we have to show our work. And it's really focusing on housing, but we're gonna take a look. We'll have to look at all of land use as we're provide preparing that report. The next section again just walks you through all of the goals in the Growth Management Act, the one that we will be doing a lot more work on as we get closer to two thousand and twenty-nine is that new climate change requirement. Again, we did start laying the foundation with this update, but a lot more work will be done over the next several years. Then the next section just talks about the mandatory chapters and what we've done. Then how we've been consistent and applying the planning policies in the multi-county planning document, which is Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision Twenty Fifty. The city of Monroe is a member. And then that flows into the countywide planning policies and then down to the city of Monroe. And as a refresher, the really big change with Vision Twenty Fifty is they created this new geography, which all communities are put in categorized by. And the new one is called High Capacity Transit Communities, and that's where billions of dollars are being invested in transportation improvements. And so through the P S R C process, it was deemed that those areas should be taking the bulk of growth for the next twenty years. What that means for Monroe is where our expectation is much lower. And then our consistency with the countywide planning policies, Monroe accepted the initial twenty forty-four population housing and employment targets. We also worked through the process that established the housing by income ban, the average median income, which is a new requirement of the Growth Management Act, and that's laid out for you on page nineteen of nine hundred and twenty-four. And then talking about how it's consistent with our existing comprehensive plan and then the pieces that you need to review it against when you're amending a comprehensive plan. The next section is conclusions, and it just summarizes everything that we've talked about through the last several meetings. It kind of summarizes how we got to the future of land use map through the scenarios last fall, to the environmental impact statement, to the open house, and then to the draft that was presented in August. And then it walks you again through how this plan is consistent or addresses the different goals of the Growth Management Act. And then continuing to scroll down, we talk about how this plan is implementing or consistent with all the mandatory elements. Again, it's land use, transportation, economic development, housing, parks and recreation, capital facilities, utilities, shoreline. And then I'm gonna skip through these because I've basically already covered it. And then one piece that was important is that we're gonna also adopt your agenda bill because it has supplemental information to your findings, and so that's that agenda bill intent. And then finally, at the very end, is the proposed recommendation for you to consider this evening. So with that, the only two other pieces of information I have for you is we did get preliminary comments from the Puget Sound Regional Council. They have five, which is amazing. One, two, three require a little bit of narrative work and two are requested additional policies. An example is they want us to have a policy in our land use chapter that better articulates how we work in coordination with Snohomish County for annexations. An example of the narrative is they've requested that we provide a little bit more information about all of the ways people move about in the community, really talking about mobility. And some of that information can be pulled right out of our ADA transitional plan, which the city adopted several years ago. So that's a couple of examples. And then this morning, we received draft comments from the Department of Commerce, which is I was most concerned about. And Lance and I actually have a meeting with our representative tomorrow just to confirm we're understanding what they're asking of us. I would say nothing really significant. They've got some clarification questions for us. They need some confirmation that we included information in the plan or where to find it. Trying to think, is anything that really stood out in that one?
I don't think so.
So those are huge hurdles for us, so I'm trying to relate. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions you have about the plan itself, about the findings. Did you have any other thoughts? This is really your opportunity.
I just wanted to throw out a reminder to anybody who's listening from home either an hour later that public comment is remains open on this for city council until November eleventh, which is obviously prior to the Monroe City Council meeting where there will be another public hearing on this. So anybody who is still wanting to make comments, please feel free to do so, send those to the city, and they are being forwarded to council members and planning commissioners and all that. So that's the comment I have. And other than that, I mean, it's been a lot of work. It you can put it up on the board, and I feel like a lot of it was like just happened, but at the same time, it feels like it's been going on for a long time.
Yeah.
So I just know there's been so much work that's been put into this, and I just know that staff and are with along with our consultants and stuff have done a ton of work on this. So over and over and over again, I think we can all say thank you so much for all the work that's we've put into this for the past two plus years.
And that's a kind of maybe a little off topic, but I was just kind of wondering. With all the work with what's gone into this, and I know there's also this vision twenty fifty. So does this satisfy vision twenty fifty also, or is that something totally different that we now will have to work on?
No. So there are different planning horizons for different agencies. The Puget Sound Regional Council, theirs was their end date is twenty fifty. Our plan was developed looking at the policies, so it is consistent. And so when I was talking about the Puget Sound Regional Council has already, yeah, P S R C has already given us feedback. As soon as I take care of those five comments they gave us, we get the go ahead from from P S R C.
Okay.
So and their planning cycle is also a little bit off. The the regional planning cycle typically ends before the countywide planning policies, which occurs before the local locally adopted plans.
Okay. So we don't have to do anything separate or different for vision twenty fifty?
No, no, we addressed the the items that were included in the policy document, either through the data analysis, the land use proposals, a lot of information in the housing, and then the goal and policy statements. Absolutely.
And just as a reminder, we give our growth numbers and projections from Puget Sound Regional.
Kind of. So the the housing and the population, it actually starts at the Washington Office of Financial Management. They're the ones that do the big picture number crunching. And then they give it to the Puget Sound Regional Council, but the the workforce for us is at the county level. So the county takes, because the the Puget Sound Regional Council says the four counties, again, which are King, Pierce, Kitsap, and Snohomish Counties, they divvy up the population for the four county region, and they give us a general idea for Snohomish County, the general idea based on those different geographies I was mentioning. But Snohomish County is really, they are the demographers that we rely upon, not only for that, but also for the land use capacity analysis. Yeah.
Yeah. So anyone online? Bob, Kelsey, Randy? Randy?
Uh, yeah, it looks really good. The final draft came out great and seeing the logo on there, I think it actually it looks really good. And not only looks good, but it has all the substantive input that we've been working on and it's laid out nicely. So I think it, I think it's really great and thank you. This is very, very minor, but on page seven of nine twenty-four of the draft, Trombley Hill Park, Trombley is just spelled incorrectly. It's B L E Y. And if we could get that fixed, and I'm I'm hoping that it's also correct. Like if you guys took that from like the parks or some other document, that it's correct there as well.
Excellent catch. Thank you. I'll make sure it's said correct in all documents.
We're ready for a motion. I move that the planning commission adopt these findings and conclusions, authorize the chair of the planning commission to sign the findings and conclusions on behalf of the commission, and recommend that the Monroe City Council adopt the draft Monroe twenty forty-four comprehensive plan.
Thanks, Carla. Commissioners in favor, please say aye. Fosed? Motion passes six to zero, Hannah. Thank you, Commissioner, very much. Got some applause from Commissioner Petrino.
So I'm just saying, your work is not complete. The biggest hurdle is done. I will be coming back shortly with citywide rezone zoning code changes for implementation. So thank you. We're not done.
Yeah, what what's what's the next step?
So so for this, it gets forwarded to city council, and city council has two more workshops, one tomorrow night and then one on the twenty ninth of October. And then they have their own public hearing. Once they adopt, then we I'll actually start working with you before they adopt, but we have to do a citywide rezone. So our zoning map, which is our legal document, is consistent with our planning document. And so the changes for changing the residential four to residential seven, that will come through. Some of the bigger code amendments, we're eliminating the the highway designation because that's right of way, so that that will require the elimination of a chapter and some additional work to ensure that that still is used as a right of way. So stuff like that will still be coming for you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are we ready to, yeah, anything else?
No, just thank you for all of your work. It's it's a lot to to review all these documents and just want to say kudos. Thank you. Extra special, thank you to to Kelsey. She read every single document, and I'm just really grateful. So thank you. Bye.
Thanks, Kelsey. Move to discussion by commissioners and staff, and we'll we'll start with Kate or we'll start with Hannah. Six point one expiring commissioner terms. We have three terms expiring at the end of the year.
We do have three terms expiring at the end of the year. I just wanted to remind the commissioners with the terms expiring. If you're interested in continuing to serve on the planning commission, to please reapply. I will be emailing out the applications for the planning commission tomorrow morning. So that is Chair Bull, Randy Blair, and Liz Nugent. So I'll send out those applications in the morning. Those terms end at the end of the year.
Madame six point two, Kate has some
Yeah.
For us, which should be very well received.
I'm not on any of the Monroe social media sites, but I keep being told that there was a lot of conversation really around the downtown proposed amendments. And so I'm hoping to educate you all to help us with some misinformation and some confusion. And so Lance and I might be tag teaming this. But the amendments that that Amy brought to you, that you had your public hearing on, that you forwarded along, there's still oh, there we go. Okay. So what I'm really hoping to do is just give you some education on land use. So this is the table for the downtown commercial zone. And so I think we've gone over this, but I just want to make sure. So if it has a P, that means it's permitted. If it has a little footnote, there's something special with that permitted use. But they don't have to do any conditional use permit. You're an outright permitted use. You send in for your business license. If it's a commercial use, it goes through the state. The state, we require business license in Monroe, so then it goes through the Monroe, what's it called again? The so the state license, you also have to have the Monroe endorsement endorsement. Thank you.
Yeah, if you just go over and hover over one of those, and it'll it'll pop up.
Oh, sure, sure. And these are at the bottom of the table, so just that's an example.
So they're more just clarifiers.
Yeah. So P is permitted, A is accessory. And what accessory means, the best example is that the V F W, we've talked so much about. In the current table, which is changing, it is an accessory use, which means it has to be secondary to something that is already permitted outright. And so what they have chosen to do is they coordinated with an art gallery. And so the art gallery is an outright permitted use. And the V F W went in as a membership organization as accessory. Might seem as an odd group, but I think they've been hosting like paint activities which benefits their membership. So I think that's actually really clever and working out. So that's an example of an accessory. A C means it's a conditional use, and we have a completely separate process. You have to get a special land use permit. There is a application. You have to explain how you comply with the rules. And then there's a public hearing before the hearing examiner. The example I can give you since I started is we had a, oh my gosh, it just spaced on the name. It is a prescription provider for people who are going through addiction treatment.
Ideal option.
Ideal option. Thank you. And so they had to show how they're consistent with the code. There was a public hearing before the hearing examiner. That one was approved. Then that information gets reported with Snohomish County, and once that conditional use permit is approved, it runs with the property. And so if ideal option goes out, but a different vendor is interested, they don't have to come back again. They're already approved. So those are the three categories. And so we've talked a lot about Crane on Main, which is an arcade. That is an outright permitted use. And so some of the confusion that we that I understand is going on in the social media world is there's an impression that parties can't be hosted there because it's not part of the use. But entertainment arcade is the use. That is what they're doing. And so anything that they're doing with their business model to support that business, birthday parties, meetings, whatever, you don't have to have an accessory. That's part of your business plan. Your use is arcade. That is outright permitted. And so that's what I'm really trying to convey. There seems to be confusion around that. You want to add anything to that?
Just sort of from a terminology standpoint, when the the when you're looking at accessory, there's generally a primary use. So the primary use is typically is typically the permitted use. And there's nuances, of course, but that's generally how it works. So underneath the umbrella of the primary use can be can occur a whole lot of things. And one that one of the examples that I have used, which hopefully makes sense, is the the Historic Society Downtown. So they so the the primary use for that location is amusing. And it's it's an outright permitted use in the downtown, in the promenade, in the historic commercial area downtown. So it meets all those requirements. Well, within the the uses of the of the primary, underneath that umbrella of the museum uses, the Historic Society operates and runs the museum, so they have board meetings, they have events, they could do fundraisers. You know, so so every one of those individual activities isn't like, oh, well, like one that's there's been a lot of confusion on, I think, in kind of the social media narrative has been, well, you can't hold meetings. Because if you'll remember when we were adopting the new use at the the planning commission public hearing, it's banquet hall, and I may get this wrong, banquet hall events and meetings. So there were and 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 so I think this idea has been like, oh, well, there you're just going to allow meetings on second floor or away from the promenade. And so anything that is a meeting is not allowed. Well, meetings can fall underneath the umbrella of a lot of different uses. I think the and I really don't want to go down the rabbit hole, but it's it's an example, kind of what we're responding to, is there was someone who commented, well, you couldn't hold a staff meeting for for your business. And I mean, that that's probably the most extreme example of not understanding and using the the zoning code correctly. Because of course you can hold a meeting underneath the umbrella of your use. And 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 it could get, you know, there's some gray area in there admittedly. But I think that it's kind of the the discussion on both sides has gone a little bit to the to the extreme. But but I think that museum use, because there's a whole lot of things that happen there. And and I bring it up because there was some concern among the Historic Society that, oh, no, we now we can't be holding events or we can't do all these things. Was that it it falls underneath that umbrella. The primary use is the museum. When you've established a primary use, I think I can say with with a high degree of confidence that the city is going to interpret that umbrella fairly fairly well. You know, the city is not, we, trust me, the amount of, if nothing else, the amount of work that goes into trying to parse out and do nuanced code enforcement is not something that that we're really wanting to do. And we're, we do encourage businesses in downtown, which is why we came forward with that code amendment. Because this was a use, this event space use is something that has come up a number of times. And it's like, well, is that appropriate? And so we've gone through that procedure, and the city council will hold a public hearing tomorrow to take to take that into consideration. I suspect that we will get some some comments. I I quite frankly, I hope we do, because sometimes I feel like we do these things in a vacuum and like to get some some comments from folks about what will, you know, what will work for them.
Bob?
I monitor a couple of these social media groups on Facebook. I I don't interact with them. Because once you start interacting with them, you'll, like Lance said, you go down that rabbit hole. In most cases, you can't satisfy them anyway. And and you know, most of the the stuff I see in the the groups that I monitor and look at are issues with the zoning enforcement, code enforcement. And I think any kind of enforcement action is going to draw a biased reaction to those folks that are involved with it. I I think it's just natural. I think that, but what they what I don't like to see is when they assume that the city is trying to run a business out of town, and I know we don't do that. But I don't get involved with that kind of discussion. It's kind of frustrating, though.
I agree with the bottom. So a potential new business or an established business in the in the city, they would look at the Monroe Municipal Code, twenty-two.
Title twenty-two.
Title twenty-two. And they can start with the tables, and then they can call the community development department if they have any questions.
Absolutely. And we also, we have a free free application. So if you've got an idea and you've found your business, in addition to calling, so you call and planner's like, yeah, it looks pretty good. But they might need building because what we're finding a lot of times is they come in, they might have to do some improvements for building code. And so you get building, planning, engineering, fire department. Sure, I'm missing somebody to review it and provide feedback. So the first pre-application meeting is free. Yeah. That typically all it takes, yeah.
There's always. So let's say a business has some type of event in their business, thinking it's critically fine, it falls in within their business. Uh, has some type of event in their business, thinking it's critically fine and falls in within their business, but it's not. What happened?
We wouldn't know about it unless somebody complains. Um, the, the whole reason this conversation even come forward is, like Lance was explaining, is we have received multiple inquiries for a banquet hall. It does not exist in our land use code. And so because the downtown was already open, we were already looking at code amendments, we're like, well, gosh, we can fix at least this in the downtown core. So if your entire business is having these social events or uh, meetings or banquets. You now have a way of legally operating. So that's what we were trying to accomplish.
And my second thing is, I know I heard this back. Before, I don't even know where I heard it at, maybe it was somewhere, but anyways, I know like some of the restaurants were like concerned, oh, so now can a family come in and rent out at the exception and have a party? But that's part of their business.
Exactly.
So it's like, it didn't make sense.
It's that big umbrella, that's what, that's why we really wanted to have this conversation.
Complaint that we can't do, and I'm like, well, that is, that is your business.
Exactly.
And that's exactly what you're open for, you want. I don't know, so I'll go back.
Yeah, the restaurant is the use.
Right.
Food and beverage are a permitted use.
Right.
What you do in there.
So I think at some point, maybe being social media, what it just brought up such a huge, everybody started like.
Right.
Cause they were confused.
Right.
Well, I, I, I do, I suspect that once we, once city council has made a decision on these code amendments, that we will, the city will do a Facebook post and um, provide the information. It, it, it may not, I know it won't answer every question, because in my experience, the, the minute you adopt code, somebody comes in with something you have thought about, uh, but that's just the nature, the nature of the world. Uh, but I think, you know, we'll do a, a Facebook posting and we'll try to be as clear on some of those particular issues. But it, it's, you know, trying to wade into the fray and, and you know, it's just generally not something that, that we're going to do as, as staff. And, and um, so.
Thanks Lance. Randy.
Uh, I just wanted to say thanks for bringing this forward to try to dispel any misinformation. And also that, you know, coming up with that idea for the, to solve a problem uh, while we could for the banquets and stuff. Um, it's appreciated, so thank you.
Yeah, um, and maybe this is too much for staff or, or something about, but would that post, would it be possible to do like a short little video? Like you just presented to us, this information is just, you know, info, doing something. Doing something similar, just to put it out, doesn't have to be fancy, schmancy edited, but just a quick spiel as a video. And I mean, obviously a little bit of text to go along with it. But if you did something like that, and you'd on the city's YouTube, so then it lives there. But it's also put out on the Facebook that goes over exactly kind of what you, what you just gave to us. That might be something that's helpful for the community too.
And we were having, that's a, that's a great idea. And, and the city has done some videos. Uh, I know Public Works has done some about um, stormwater and, and, and some, and some other categories. But the, we were having this discussion in, in internally with staff. And I was sort of waving my arms and doing this umbrella thing. And one of our staff members says, I, I could think of a, of a visual that will really help to describe that. I said, whatever you need to do to do that. So I keep, I keep crossing my fingers and it's like, hey, how's the umbrella?
You don't want to get really super visually stimulating and do the editing. I mean, that's on, that's on staff.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, but things like that, and, and it's also, again, it's something that you can provide to, to people.
It can be a better of a website, so it lives on the, you know, the business, whatever website too. So I mean, it can be put in a few different places, but put out on social media too is helpful. Yeah, I've got to know, we have a, we have a um, a consultant um, we can reach out to and ask her for assistance and Patrick, so. That's a, a great idea.
Yes, thank you.
That's all I had. I just, I was hoping that we could kind of go over the, what the land uses are and, and how we see them. Cause Lance is right. I mean, we, once business gets going, really want to stay out of their way, want them to succeed. It's right here.
One of the themes, I, I almost hesitate to say this, but just, one of, one of the things that, that I, cause I know if I were sitting on the outside, the things I might scratch my head about, it's like, why is the city worried about that? And not these other things? Because there's, there are a lot of, and I, in, in the downtown, there's a lot of discussions. And it's not just downtown, but it, it extends out. There's, there's problems or there's, there's issues at times with parking and with um, you know, homeless population and crime of different types. And you know, and all this stuff gets locked into it is, and it's like, well, how come the city's not paying attention to that? Well, you know, part of it is that it's, we're all one organization, but it's different departments. And obviously, community development, I mean, we deal with homeless issues from a land use um, aspect particularly, but not from an enforcement. So our enforcement falls into another category. But oftentimes what happens is, and, and not really, not pointing fingers that it's anybody's fault. But we have a discussion with someone about a business that they want to do. And then when it comes to fruition, it's not necessarily the way it was presented for a number of reasons. It morphs over time. And so now a person might find themselves outside the boundaries of, of what's allowed in the code. And staff hasn't responded to that initially because we weren't asked that question. So some of that is a communication thing to make sure that we're asking more questions and being more clear about, just so that you know. These are sort of the boundaries that, that this use is described under. So I guess that umbrella, I'm going to stick with that umbrella analogy till next spring. But, but that's how some of these come to be. And, and it's, it is, sometimes I think it's the dynamic sort of organic nature of small businesses. Uh, I have all the respect in the world for small business owners, because that is hard work and you have to be creative on a daily basis. And uh, it, you know, sometimes it's at no one's fault, that, that, that occurs. But then we get caught, because we are obligated to apply the rules of the sun cut. So sometimes when it seems a little bit odd, why this, why does the city care about that and not something else? A lot of times it, it gets generated from that kind of process. So communication is always key and we're always trying to improve that when we can.
So thank you for the conversation.
Any other thoughts? Anyone want to voluntarily be uh, chair of the Downtown Business Association on a volunteer basis and? That would be great.
We don't have one.
That's what I'm saying.
We used to, we used to have one, but we don't.
Well, we, well, we're, we, uh, the city is, is trying to facilitate a process to allow that to happen. Not allow that to encourage it to happen. It's, I mean, it doesn't have to, we don't have to allow it. Uh, and so EDAB, Economic Development Advisory Board, has a number of subcommittees. One of, one of them is down, it's a downtown subcommittee. And Patrick Doherty, who's our economic development coordinator, economic development person. Uh, it is meeting with a voluntary group, everyone's encouraged to come. Downtown Merchants Association, I think is maybe what it's called, to try to get that, that group formed. Because it's, you know, a lot of cities have those and it's a good avenue. The downtown is different than businesses on highway two, for a lot of different reasons. They have, they share um, a similar geography, the, the, the buildings are different down there. It's, it's um, you know, it's intended to be kind of a different place. The parking is different and it operates in a different way. So I'm crossing my fingers in a positive way that, that will take hold. We'll see, there's been folks that have been coming to some of those meetings that have provided some comments on the downtown uh, code amendments. And uh, hopefully that communication, it acts as a sort of a piece of education as well, so. But yeah, if somebody wants to volunteer, that would be great, yeah. It's an unpaid position.
I have talked to a couple of business owners down there about this situation. And I would say the biggest complaint I've heard is they can't attend the meetings. Because it's when their business is open. So um, and, and, and that there's a little bit of, um, because they haven't been to a meeting, they can't. Um, confusion exactly what it is, what they're doing, what's happening, but if they're not attending, they, you know, not knowing that information. So I don't know if there's any way to change the timing of when they are doing those meetings, but.
It's, it's been an issue that's come up. I was, I attended the last uh, meeting uh, two, I believe, two Thursdays ago. And it was, had the highest number of folks attending, you know, probably somewhat related to issues that have gone on down there that people were unhappy with. But um, Patrick has been reaching out face to face with the businesses and going down, and going to the businesses. And this, this, I, this obstacle of the time, there's no, there's really no good solution. In fact, they had reached out and, and tried to do a survey of like what time would work best, and they haven't gotten a lot of responses. And it, there's, there's really no magic solution to that, because you know, the businesses, some of them are open really early. And, and I understand why they're, they're, they don't, they don't have large staff. So we're trying to come up with some solutions of how to address that, but it, yeah, it's always, and that's an issue for any kind of public meetings. That folks have different commitments and.
No, move to Patrick.
Patrick Doherty is the um, economic development um.
He's an employee or a contractor?
He's a contractor with the city, but the city has had this position for a number of years. And Patrick is, and, and Patrick, Patrick has a, a very well-rounded uh, experience. He's, he's been a community development director, he's been an economic, an economic development director and has, he's done. He has done a lot of things from code writing to uh, public engagement with businesses. So he, he's, he's, he's really um, out trying to specifically work with the downtown.
What are you doing with this, this, just to volunteer?
Oh, it's, it's, it's a paid position.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, okay. So he's, uh, he's a, he's not full-time, but he's a contractor. But they, the, the comment that you mentioned about people didn't know what was going on. So they, there's a minutes, a meeting summary that are done every month. And we've been talking about better ways of getting those distributed out, out to folks. And what, and the intention of that group is, the, the city is really not coming, okay, here is what you need to do. The city is really just trying to facilitate the process and have the business owners come together. And really it's up to them to figure out what, what it is that they want to do. We're not a, we're not a historic downtown. And, and if you have a designated historic downtown, you're required to have a mainstream program. And they're, and they're required to have a designer view committee for the city. So there's a lot of formalized downtowns, downtown organizations in those kind of communities. But you know, here, I guess the opportunity is you can be wherever you want to be. Um, but it, it does create a little bit of a lack of a framework for how you get started. So it's, it, the Monroe chapter, I know it's been tried to be, be formed in the past and is, is operated for a certain amount of time. But then the people involved are, are no longer business owners in downtown.
Now, part of that, I don't know if it's part of the same thing, but one of the business owners I talked to, they've gotten a flyer about donating money for the planters.
Adopt a planter.
Yeah, so that part of the same.
Yeah. I can, I'll, I'll forward out the last um, meeting summary from, from that, from that monthly meeting to everybody on the city council. Cause I think that it'll give you an idea of some of the things that are going on there and some of the discussions. But adopt a planter is, is, has been one of them.
Okay, I wasn't, yeah, so one of them talked about it.
That's on the city's, they, they posted that on the city's Facebook page there.
I think so, yeah. I'll, I'll forward it out. Liam did a very good job of, of um, summarizing the meeting. So I'll share his expertise.
Thanks Lance. Kelsey. That's what I get.
What?
Oh.
It was the cursor.
It looked like you were raising a hand, but it was Hannah's cursor.
Sorry, Kelsey.
Hi Jay.
Didn't need to pop quiz yet, it was just a, a computer.
Okay. Want to continue with the, your commissioner discussion?
Yeah, we'll get to our regular commissioner and uh, staff discussion. We'll start with Bob.
What? Oh, uh. I want to say that the Public Works Department is going, great guns are working diligently to keep the storm drains open. They have that big truck comes through my, our neighborhood, at least every time a storm is going to come and they come out and clean out our storm drains. Um, we have a retention basin off of London and, and, and sometimes it looks to me like that's going to overflow. So they work hard to keep everything uh, managed and I want to, I want them to be commended, as well as the parks folks. Last weekend, you know, the, if you may not know this, but the Parks Department is understaffed. And so they, they work very hard to keep our landscaping up. And the other day, it was raining cats and dogs and it was on a Sunday. And the poor guy was out mowing the city part, part of the roundabout. And it was, you could tell the poor guy was miserable, but he was out there doing it. So I, I commend him for that. I, you may not know, uh, I'm also a member of the Snohomish County Human Rights Commission. And uh, we were able to take a tour of the new uh, county election center that's up, at the city, um, the county uh, campus up there. It, it's open for tours and it's also open for folks to observe uh, the election process. Uh, I, I encourage everyone to do that. It's quite enlightening, it's very enlightening uh, at the lengths that the county goes to secure our election. So if you have any interest in that, I, I encourage you to do it. It only takes twenty, twenty minutes to a half hour, so you don't have to invest a whole time. Also, as an aside, one of the, my fellow county commissioners is the chair of the Everett Planning Commission. And she was asking how we were doing with our comprehensive plan. And I told her we were basically done. And I said that was because the city of Monroe has a better staff than the city of Everett does. And uh. And she agreed.
They've got more issues.
They, they got more issues than we do. So uh, I said, you guys have a lot of room to improve, to get up to the standards that Monroe has. Thank you, and thank you staff.
Thanks Bob. Randy.
Oh, there we go. Um, I don't have much, I just, um, it's probably something that Kate's already going to say at the end. But um, just a timeline of what we're looking at for the rest of this year and what, like the, the start of the process for the zoning um, review and stuff looks like for next year.
Yes, we're getting to that. Actually Hannah and I will be tag teaming when it gets to us.
Stay tuned, Randy, it'll just be another ten or so minutes. Kelsey.
Um, I don't have much either, but I just want to say, I'm so excited. We're moving this forward to um, the city council, seeing like the fact, the conclusion of facts was um, exciting to read and just be like, wow, we really are here. And so I thought we were done, but I guess we're not. Exciting too. I mean, I feel like at least we're one checkpoint closer and that's really, I, I feel very accomplished. And it's exciting to get to do that with all y'all. Um, and uh, just fall is here, that's it, that's all I got. Thanks, Steph.
Um, gosh, I read the book. Um, gosh, I read what's being said, it's, you know, we've had so much information. And, you know, getting this information on a Friday, and then having a meeting on a Monday, and trying to go through and read, and then you know, I missed obviously the whole first year of this, so catching up. And uh, it's a lot of information, but it's, it's good information. And uh, obviously, staff has provided all this information and went through all this work, so thank you, thank you very much. And uh, um, yeah, it's been a lot, but I'm glad we're at this point, and glad we're going to the city council. And I look forward to the next chapter of this. So thank you again, thanks, Ryan, I agree.
I just wanted to say thank you profusely to staff. Really appreciate all the work you put into this. Do you need us to show up to any city council meetings?
Yeah.
I know previously, sometimes we were requested to show up just to show our support of the comprehensive plan to the public hearing on the twelfth of November. Or is that um not something that you're requesting us?
Let me think about it and get back to you. Um, I know the mayor is, is really excited about finishing this process. And he's already um giving me direction to work with our city clerk. He wanted to have a formal signing um event for the comp plan. Um, so maybe mark on your calendar that public hearing date, um, just as a holding place, but I will get back to you before the end of the week.
Yeah, because I don't want to run a bowel of forms or anything, um, but if you need us, you'll let us know.
Yeah, uh, it might be just the chair or vice chair to present, but um, let me think about that. It's always nice, especially when you have, it's not um a split vote, you're moving together. This is a big, this is a big deal, this is the biggest thing you're gonna work on once every ten, eight years. So I, I will, um, I will send out an email to all of the commissioners with guidance before the end of the week.
Okay, thank you.
There's no, there, there's nothing that preclude us from attending, I mean, we're citizens after all.
Yeah.
No, Bob, I'm just asking, a lot of folks have trouble, you know, with that situation, whatever, attending in person. Um, so I didn't want to put anybody on the spot.
I don't, I don't have such trouble.
Good enough, thank you for sharing that information, appreciate that. But um, Kate will let us know if our attendance is required, if it's not, then um we can always be able to zoom in, right?
Just to kind of tag team off of something Bob said earlier, is that um, we obviously have an election that is coming up. And ballots are in the mail for all Washington, or at least for Snohomish County here this week. So we will be receiving those in the mail later this week, probably in time for the weekend. Um, and so obviously, we hear a lot about the national news, but there are a lot of the local things that impact us a little more directly than some of the national stuff might, so I urge people to get out, vote. Um, including, there's even a, the city has, is an initiative. A levy, a levy, and there's information about that on the website. And so um, you know, anybody who's voting should take a look at that and see how they feel about it, because that's something that directly impacts us as a city, more localized than some of the other stuff. So um, vote, there's a ballot box at the library, for anybody who doesn't know, you can also postmark it by uh election day, which is November fifth. But uh, yeah, other than that, again, thank you to staff, thank you to fellow commissioners, and this has been fun.
I don't really have any, anything to add. Um, I want to thank staff too, because Kate has been driving the train on this, on the, on the cop land, um, and has done a fantastic job. And we, she's to be commended for that.
Thank you.
But I did see her listed first on the plan.
As she should be.
That's what I'm saying.
I, I saw that, and I was like, yeah.
As it should be, good job.
Definitely a team effort, but I appreciate it, and all the extra hours. Um, I think I'm gonna defer to Hannah first to talk about schedule, and then I will give you where I'm going. I do, and and Randy, I do not have a schedule yet, but I can give you my thoughts of where I need to go, because there are also some code amendments that we have to get through before June of next year. So Hannah, you want to talk about November and December?
Yeah, so um, November eleventh is Veterans Day, that's our first meeting in November. So that is going to be canceled. So first meeting in November is canceled. Um, the second meeting of November is the week of Thanksgiving. So I don't know if we're gonna have lots of people out of town, um, what everyone's schedule looks like for that week. I, I think we were gonna try and get the um.
Yeah, we have one item that we need to get a public hearing scheduled for. If we do, if you are available for the twenty eighth, fabulous, we'll keep that date. If we have a lot of people who are absent, because again, it's Thanksgiving week. Um, we would ask that we put it on, what was that week, the, the week in between the eleventh and twenty eighth? Uh, it would be the eighteenth of November.
Or the twenty, twenty fifth is what's scheduled.
It would be the twenty fifth is the, oh, sorry, the twenty fifth is the week of Thanksgiving, sorry, Thanksgiving is the twenty eighth.
Well, I highly, you blame the twenty fifth, okay?
Oh, you have the twenty fifth.
Okay. I should be able to make either one or the other in person around soon.
Okay. Me too.
Okay. Okay, then we will keep, we will keep that meeting on the twenty fifth, and we just, we need that one to start um moving the code cleanup forward, and we have the public hearing scheduled.
So that one will be about, what did you say?
That, that was, yeah, the phase one code cleanup that Leanne has been bringing forward about the typos, inconsistencies, missing information, regulatory requirements that got missed or dropped. Um, your public hearing for that will be then on November twenty fifth.
Can we help start a new spreadsheet for January first?
For phase two code cleanup.
And then Christmas, I think our second meeting is the week of Christmas, is that right? So our second meeting in December is December twenty third. Um, I don't expect people to know their schedules that far out, um, but if I know you do, I mean, you can always email me if you anticipate being absent.
Um, I think if it's okay, we have a pretty light schedule, we've got middle housing, um, St. Middle Housing. Um, Amy is working on the accessory dwelling unit. Um, I will not be available on the twenty third, but I can start my work with you all possibly on the ninth for um the municipal code changes. So I'm kind of feeling like a preemptive, cancel the twenty third.
Happy early holidays.
Okay, so let's do that. The eleven twenty five is a go, and then we'll um twelve nine will be their last meeting of the year, unless we absolutely need that on the twenty third. Do you have anything else for discussion?
Uh, so um, to answer Brandy's question, so the next step is um the, so the comp plan is like sixty percent, sixty-five, seventy percent of the work for this ten-year update. It's not just your comprehensive plan, but you also have to look at all your development regulations. And so with that, the, the big piece for the comp plan is the citywide rezone. So those changes to the future land use map, that will be part of the next push. And then um a handful of changes to the zoning code that are completely independent of the work that Leanne is working on. Um, some of the items that we will be bringing forward again are the accessory dwelling units, um, that was a state change. Anita will be beginning a project where it's um conversion of existing structures to residential uses. That also has to be done by June thirty first, or June thirtieth of next year. Um, I will be working on permitting process, which is technically due at the first of the year, but I'm not super worried, because it goes in regardless if we've done it or not. Um, I just would like to still bring it to you, because there is some flexibility in how you want us to process applications. And so, uh, we have some thoughts internally and need to bring that forward. Uh, the citywide rezone, and then uh working on additional code changes. The big one that um I'm starting to get really passionate about, haven't quite figured out how to get there, but all of the conversations the commission has had around the mixed-use designation along Main Street, and how do we preserve the uh existing structures, but encourage more residential? That balance that we've been talking about, um, while also obtaining um our population housing numbers and um discouraging displacement, especially in the downtown core. So that's coming, I do not have a schedule for you yet, I will be working on that in the next couple of weeks. Uh, tomorrow, I will be taking the last phase, um, excuse me, one more workshop for city council. And then on the twenty ninth, it will, the remaining items are capital facilities and tran- transportation and parks. And then again, their public hearing is on November twelfth. So I'm hoping to have a schedule for you the very first part of January.
Okay. Anything to round it out, Annie, anything else?
I do, yeah. Um, so it's a little last minute, but for anyone interested, um, this week at the American Planning Association Washington Conference, um, brief charge uh Wednesday night from six to eight P M, they're offering the short course on local planning. Um, I've sent out the links to those um in the past, but this one is going to be in person. So the short course on local planning goes over things like the Open Public Meetings Act, um, land use planning laws, uh, comprehensive planning, which you're all familiar with by now, um, but it's just a really great resource. And like we said, it's free, and they don't often have them in person, usually done over Zoom. So if you want to do that, um, it's going to be in Bellevue at Maiden Bower Center. I'll send out the link for you to register um tomorrow morning, if anyone is interested. So uh, again, that's Wednesday, this Wednesday, um, from six to eight P M, so that's all I have.
There'll be a lot of planner vibe going on.
It's gonna be a lot of planners.
A lot of planner vibe.
If we ended up having a forum by any chance, would we notice we need to go out, right?
Hmm, we would.
You would, yeah. Because we'll be in the mix, so we'll let you know.
Yeah, if you intend on attending, just um shoot me an email. Um, I could just post a notice, a natural forum too.
Because I have about at least the twenty-four hours in advance, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that this one today?
Yes, Wednesday.
Yeah, so you need to know by tomorrow before the city closes, so that they can get noticed out if we have a forum.
Yep. That's all I have. I'm gonna be adjourned to meeting.
If you're in favor, please say aye. Thank you all very much.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.